Commissioners, we are live again.
Welcome back to our nine thirty action item. We have an assessor's value cancellation number one. Noreen?
I'm here to request a cancellation of market value for RPM zero three one five zero zero A zero zero two zero. What had happened was an ineffective, excuse me, incorrect effective year was applied to this on one of the Crystal Beach condos for Mr. Garten. And with the interior inspection verification that I conducted, it was one hundred percent my fault. So I'm requesting a cancellation of eighty one thousand one hundred dollars on his value.
Okay. Any other discussion from other commissioners?
I would move that we approve the value cancellation for parcel number R zero N or R O N zero three one five zero zero A zero 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 two zero for eighty one thousand one hundred dollars.
One second. And Commissioner Thompson, so just a clarity question. How long can they actually bring these to our attention for value cancellation for this year? I thought that needed to be during BOE.
I can't answer that one hundred percent. This is a gentleman that I've been dealing with through the whole BOE and he actually took us to BOE. And I never was able to make it out to his facility with all of the phone calls. So once I was able to go out there and realize that it was the county's fault is the only reason that I brought this to Sue's attention and asked for the cancellation.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Noreen. Next up, we have fiscal year twenty twenty six budget workshop summary overview, proposed budget. Clerk Miller.
Commissioner Thompson, just one moment and I will again, more than likely will be the last budget workshop for fiscal year twenty twenty six before it goes to publication and we have our public hearing on the twenty seventh of August. I do want to bring to the attention a few modifications that have been made. And I do have one of the directors in the commissioner rooms to provide an additional request that came in late. It's specifically regarding buildings and grounds and our new facilities director has made a request for one of the positions that potentially is going to be vacated due to a retirement become a HVAC journey person position. And Terry, if you would like to come and explain your request.
Yeah, so most of the preventative maintenance we have here at Valley County directly deals with HVAC, right? So preventative maintenance and our trouble calls. Currently, we have a, I believe, a contract that's around twenty grand for PMG to do preventative maintenance twice a year. I feel like that money could go serve us better if we had an on hand journey man or woman working for us with us when we need it instead of PMG, I think the closest is Emmett, I believe. So we have emergencies, we're waiting for PMG to get here, which is not a good thing in the winter up here. So I know that in the future, I know that we could save us money from trouble calls or contracts within. We can use that person to train our interior staff as well.
So real quick question, I know Mitch is stepping down about the same time Scott is. Is this person gonna not just do heat and air, he will also, or he or she will also do?
Everything.
Everything.
Yep, extra duties as assigned like we all do.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
What is the increase?
Commissioners, if I can, Commissioner Caldwell, thank you for that question. Let me get it on the screen. So the potential increase would be thirty six thousand eight hundred and fifty nine dollars and nineteen cents.
And that's only for the HVAC?
That is correct. So that, this expense line would fund one facilities technician and then the
I believe we have
is correct.
We have two?
Currently, we have two and then this would fund the facility, the new position that Terry is requesting.
What is the base salary for the new position that you're requesting?
This is where I'm gonna, Mike came up with some thank you.
Great question. As with anything, it depends on who we would find. What I was asked was come up with some numbers for what we could potentially be paying if we were to hire an HVAC technician and journeyman level. The range of potential salaries out there in the local area is somewhat varied, obviously depending upon experience level. What I did was kind of went to, I went to slightly above what the market average would be. And that kind of represents the high end of what we would recruit for. But we could potentially be looking at somebody lower down the pay scale because we'd be able to offer benefits and that's something that depending on who we find, if we find somebody working for an HVAC company that offers a good benefit package, obviously they would probably say, I want more money. If we found an independent contractor who is having to pay for everything out of their own pocket, they might say getting on the county's benefit plan and retirement plan sounds like a nice thing for me. I'd be willing to take maybe a lower salary for something like that. And with my previous state experience, I also know there should be a state HVAC inspector in the area. I'm gonna find out who that individual is for sure. Because I wanna, I wanna know what their potential price point might be because they're already receiving state benefits and we might be able to just slide them right into our pockets.
That's very possible.
Anyway, I don't have a great answer for you. But I do think I, I kind of shot for the high end of what we would probably be looking for in my, the numbers that I submitted to the clerk's office.
So we're, you're looking for a state licensed journeyman HVAC individual?
That is my ultimate yes.
Okay.
So the rate, what is your range that you're gonna, if, if this is approved and posted, what are you?
I think we were looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty eight to thirty seven dollars an hour for a potential starting range.
That's kind of what journeyman electricians are, so.
I think there's companies up in Donnelly openings that are starting at thirty seven. Assign on bonus.
Okay.
Relocation help and
I can't hear them. Are they standing at the mic?
So there's some companies in Donnelly that are, that have HVAC journeyman positions open right now. On their website, it states that they are paying thirty seven dollars an hour to start for a journeyman license. Also with bonus, sign on bonuses and relocation bonuses as well. But they also do not have Percy or the type of benefits we have with county.
So this thirty six thousand, Commissioner, this thirty six thousand is in addition to what our current salary is?
Correct. It would be an additional thirty six thousand would be added to that expense line to fund this position. That expense line that you're currently seeing funds one facilities technician and two janitorial staff as well as this new position. So that two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand three hundred and forty four dollars, just again to clarify, funds two janitorial position full time, one facilities tech position, and then the new position that is being requested, the HVAC journeyman position.
The thirty six thousand also includes a three percent increase. That's not just salary.
That, that's correct. That also includes the proposed increase, sorry. For clarification, yes.
Keep in mind on the backend, the savings that we'll, excuse me, we'll have, it won't be in salary obviously, but it will be in contracts and emergency callouts and maintenance alike.
Commissioners, Terry asked me to check that and the amount that the county has expended this year has been approximately twenty thousand dollars to have PMG, the contracted company, come in and do this type of work that Terry is referring to.
Right, and we're also taking on nine more units down there at the Meritile.
Correct, yeah.
Cascade Annex.
And HVAC trained people are kind of jacks of all trade. They learn low voltage electricity. They, they can troubleshoot a lot of stuff, not just HVAC stuff. So I think it'll be a tremendous adding to the team.
One, I don't want to put Terry on the spot, but I'm going to, one area that we could potentially reduce in this budget is the part-time janitorial staff. Terry felt that her team, her new team, once she officially takes over in October, could be the cleaning, the custodial work could be done by two full-time employees. So we could potentially eliminate the part-time position. But I want to make sure that Terry has had the opportunity to really make sure that that was her recommendation to the commissioners. If so, we would reduce, potentially reduce this by seventeen thousand eight forty eight oh two. We would eliminate the part-time custodial position. The concerns that I have and I think the commissioners might have are the buildings that Valley County does have, the new Cascade building, McCall Annex, Lake Fork, potentially the road department, but I want to make sure that your director makes the recommendation to, to you.
And I, I'm asking to give me enough time to get, I'm a late comer of the game, as you know. Or the end, year out closeout, right? So this next year, I think I'll have a much better grasp on what I'd like to see going forward and, and bring to you. I think there's a lot of improvements that can be made, you know, with fresh set of eyes coming from the outside. So yeah, I, I feel like we could probably get away with not having a part-time custodial staff. I'm not quite sure what the last time it was filled.
Part-time position has never been filled, Commissioners.
So I don't really hear much complaining about, I am a little bit worried about Ameritile, only that building, the new annex, only because of the amount of carpet in there. However, I am aware of a lot of really cool stuff that janitor supply companies have to do carpet. So I, I really, I still don't see another part-time position being needed, but I'd like to reserve that final stamp until next year and I got some time to really look at it.
I look forward to that. I mean, you're new in your job and I'd like to see what you're gonna bring. And I'm gonna trust you on that.
So what I am hearing, we will reduce that part-time position then and we'll take that down to zero. So there will be the savings there.
Yeah, you good with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything for facilities building unless there was anything else you wanted to bring to the Commissioners' attention.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry.
Next, I guess I'm going to request that Human Resource Director Mike Savoy present. There was some modifications made to some salaries within the sheriff's budget that are different from the, what you had last year, or excuse me, what, the different than what you had the last worksheet. And I'm just gonna let, turn it over to Mike and just have him kind of explain to you some additional analysis that he conducted, which increased the salaries deputies slightly from the last time. I can go back and look what the increase was. I apologize, I don't have it before me. This was just
Clerk Miller, since I can't see that, would you please tell me what page you're on?
It's on page two, Commissioner Moppen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioners, Clerk Miller was referencing a recent change we made or requested, I guess we should say, to one individual's pay. It was only one that I'm aware of, correct? That I made the change for recently in the sheriff's office. We have made some requests for additional increases for a few sheriff's deputies in that office, but one, we made an additional increase just a couple of days ago. The employee in question is one of our corporals in our detention facility. We are looking at making an adjustment to that individual's pay. I had originally put in a request for an additional sixty nine cents an hour for that individual. I am now requesting an additional adjustment of a dollar eighteen per hour. So just forty nine cents an hour more than what we had originally stated for that individual.
And Commissioners, I apologize, that is going to be reflected on age eleven under the jail budget? Again, it's gonna be different than the last report that you previously had, but I can pull up that report and see what that is, the increase was.
So just to make sure that we're you're clear on what I'm asking for, for this individual, we are asking that they receive an annual cost of living adjustment per everyone else, the same rate as everybody else, but to also receive an additional one dollar and eighteen cent an hour increase. This is an equity adjustment to bring them more in line with what others are being paid in the department and to ensure that this individual, their pay is consistent, basically.
No, that's kind of what we've been asking all along is make equitable for everybody.
Right, and these, unfortunately, we often do these every now and again, but it is important that we do make these small adjustments to individuals' pay from time to time for various reasons. Sometimes people do get overlooked, they get hired at just the wrong time during just the wrong moment and they miss out on opportunities that others get or whatever. It's important that we look through everybody's pay every single year and try to find out those, find who those outliers are and make small adjustments now rather than very large adjustments later.
Yep, I agree with that. I think that's everything.
That was it for that?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I do see a couple other department heads in the room and I just want to make sure if they had anything to bring. I know Mara had sent me an email wanting some clarifications, wanting to make sure that certain things were budgeted for. If her new position is in fact approved, again, we'll share with the Commissioners that that position has been budgeted for. The equipment that would go along with that new position would actually be funded in IT department's budget. I've talked with the IT director, Jeremy Wilcox, and he indicated that that equipment, an iPad, a computer, monitor, keyboard was in fact accounted for when he prepared his budget. What wasn't accounted for is a, just some general office equipment, like a desk. And I don't think that that adjustment was made. So we probably will have to either increase that or talk with facilities to see if there's any available desks.
So this, this is gonna be an employee of the county, is that correct?
Yes, but as of right now, I'm having discussions with Brian Davis about incorporating that position into the G and A agreement. So that would be covered and potentially a lot of this stuff I could put into this funding mechanism as well. I just started those discussions. So some of this stuff might be covered and might not have to come out of taxpayer dollars. But we still have to put it in the budget so that I can have some funding to pay for the stuff before I get a reimbursement. So that's some of the big questions. And if it truly is approved.
Individual will be based out of Lake Fork too?
Yep, yep.
In the fire room?
Yep, yeah, they'll just share an office with me.
Commissioners, just to be clear, what we heard from the last workshop is the Commissioners are wanting to transition from Mara's position to be grant funded to be tax dollars. So we are making that transition for fiscal year twenty twenty six would, which would in fact then make this position more permanent than having it a grant funded position.
That's something we've been
I think it makes a lot of sense to have the manager as a more permanent position versus another employee being more permanent than the director.
And still, some of both of our wages, speaking with Brian and Tyre, can still be covered by tax or by grant funding. It's just the totality of it won't be. So there will still be some, some compensation depending on implementation to help fund some of that stuff.
Mara, how will that work? Say, because we've been pushing, trying to get you on anyhow. But they funded you for five years. So what happens to those other years of grant funding? If you become employee of the county, how's that?
There's multiple different options. The first option is they're looking into seeing how long we can extend that grant out. So this individual that we hire may have longer to be covered by the G and A grant, which theoretically without be the best case. Just because then their wage is covered for five years instead of the, the extra three years that's left on it, right? The second option is if they cannot extend that contract, because it is bill funding and all funding has different timeframes, right? That money can go on the ground. So we just change some of that cost to go implementation on the ground.
Yeah.
And or the third one is covering some of my wage for a period of time as well. So there's a lot of different options and discussion points to have with this kind of funding. Brian Davis is truly looking into how long this funding is available and how long we can extend it out and then we'll sit down and kind of discuss some of those other options. Because, I mean, plenty of options.
Okay, good. I was curious how that would, how that would play out.
It could cover, like, let's say about fifty percent, like, they can only cover my additional employee for two more years or three more years, what's left on it, and we hire him at twenty three dollars an hour. So mine theoretically could be covered for another year by that, that agreement as well. Or that money can go on the ground. So it just really, the overall intent of what the county wants to accomplish.
So Doug, how does that work? Factoring into the budget.
So we capture that on the revenue side and we have accounted for that on the revenue side of the general fund budget for that grant. The remaining amount available in that grant has been accounted for. I can pull that up if you would like to see.
Mara, a question for you. Is Danny still using that desk that's currently in your office?
No. He's not.
So that could be for your person?
Yep.
And then if he needs a desk when he's there, he could either use the conference room or use the table that's in Dave's area too.
There's a desk right back there.
Yeah, and I'm having discussions with Dave as well.
Oh, was it?
So there is some of those discussion points, but if we are gonna keep this position around, it would be beneficial to outfit them with newer stuff as well.
But we could do desks and that kind of thing. I mean, they, they're getting the technology, obviously, but as far as worrying about purchasing desks, that's probably not our highest priority. I am a little bit worried though about an extra vehicle. Where are you at on vehicles for this person? Would they be in the field or just in the office?
They would be in the field almost every day, yes. And vehicle has already been supplied to my department as a spare from the road department. So that's already covered. So I, I did put it in a capital expense originally, but I won't need that because I do have my used vehicle already.
Awesome. Think we got that covered. Oh, shoot. Clear as mud.
Great funding.
Lot of options.
I mean, that's the biggest thing with, Brian has to look and see what we are able to do as a county and then we can have more discussions after that.
Sure.
Especially how long he can extend that grant out. I would personally like to see the second person's wage covered for longer and then me finding other grants to help fund my position with other things.
And Commissioner Thompson, you had asked how it's reflected. So you can see this grant, G and A infrastructure, it was three hundred and seventy nine thousand. So we have projected, it, we've reduced it based on what we've already requested in reimbursement. So we now have that at two hundred and eighty thousand and then Mara, the grant writer, are keeping track of that. But it is reflected that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty six will be used to offset the costs and reduce the amount that we will have to levy in tax dollars.
I see. Got it, yeah.
That also includes projects though. I want to make sure that that's clear. That's not just specific. That also includes any G and A projects that meet the criteria.
Any questions? Sherry, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, I do would, while we have Mara standing, I apologize, giving a pick on Mara some more. Not pick on her, but just discuss with her, her request regarding Title III funds. She felt that Valley County should continue to utilize the Title III funds that are available for the annual fire mitigation grants at the county awards as well as the additional cost. Mara, I'll just turn it over to you to kind of allow you to present to the Commissioners of what your recommendations would be for Title III funds for next fiscal year.
So Title III funds, there's about a hundred and thirteen thousand left in Title III funds after this fiscal year. Typically, we allocate about fifty grand every year to the Firewise Grants and that accomplishes anywhere from eighty acres to a hundred and ten acres. About forty applicants usually get awarded. Last year, we had seventy that applied, so thirty didn't get awards. But I would propose that we still continue that since that's one of the big funding mechanisms for that Title III. So that would use about half of the remaining funds. The other half I discussed with Juan Bonilla, the fire, the emergency manager and fire chief about the mobile risk assessment portal. So that's one of the big discussions is how to upkeep that data or even get the five thousand parcels that are unassessed updated. And so we looked at a previous budget and it cost roughly around five hundred dollars per day if we hired two to three assessors. And we could get that accomplished in one year if we use fifty eight thousand dollars to hire basically seasonal employees for one season to get all those assessed. And then after that, we would try to upkeep that within my department, with the fire departments. Hopefully at that point, we won't have a thousand unit development come up, because that's really the heart upkeep. And after that, we'll be doing about twenty percent. And I believe with myself and having an additional employee, we can kind of facilitate that in-house with the help of a little bit with the fire departments when they go out and do propane inspections and stuff like that. They're willing to do that.
Okay, I agree with Mara. We have to report to the federal government how we're using this, these funds and if we have any leftovers, we potentially have to send it back to them. So it does make sense of utilizing this funding now, even of utilizing this funding now, even though the there is uncertainty about future Title III. It does make sense for us to utilize this to expend it down to zero. Um, and then we can in fact report it to the federal government that they these funds have been spent uh that are within the that also meet the criteria of how the uh Title III funds can be allocated.
So is the timeline? I mean, can you use part of these funds this coming year and and the rest of the year after, if you haven't expended all of them or you have to, you have a timeline, you have to?
Commissioner Thompson, we we have, yes, we had, they have to approve any carryover um to, but we have to account for what that carryover was is going to be used for. We've already done that. But what we would be doing now is for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and with the small amount that we have, I guarantee based on the presented programs that Mara has uh submitted, those funds will be expended by fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Zeroed out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I think there's roughly around after those two expenses are roughly what, six, seven grand? And what I propose and what I've already been using is buying Firewise signs, creating brochures for fire mitigation, stuff like that. Um, I would really like to do a seminar next year. Um, so I might use some of those funds for doing a wildfire um summit uh is kind of what my big goal is. Um, I have been looking at other grants to help fund some of that stuff. Um, so waiting to hear if I got a twenty thousand dollar grant to help fund that.
But say next year, if we don't get this Title III, it's.
The Firewise Grants will be done.
But Commissioners, we have some suggestions to make that you could potentially use PILT dollars to continue that program. If the Commissioners felt that that program that is in existence is um something that they want is advantageous for the community, I think you guys have. So we could look at utilizing uh other funding sources, specifically PILT, to fund uh those uh grants. Commissioner Mopin, sorry to interrupt you.
No worries. The way that that works, the funding mechanism is if Title III is not there, we receive more in PILT funding that year. It's not equal to what Title III is. It's a reduced amount, but there is an additional PILT. So what Doug and I had discussed, uh clerk, sorry, um was that whatever that overage is and PILT could be identified for some of the Title III um programs that we have in place to keep those going.
Oh, I see.
So that will be something we can look at next year.
Okay.
And since there's funds still available, I'd still recommend using those, um cause like what I said is if you don't use them, you do have to allocate them back.
Yep.
So, um.
It moves us to use them.
Yeah, and it's a program that, I mean, I already have individuals asking about it for next uh next year. And so they typically open in February and I already have emails from landowners wanting to apply for them. So stuff is something people look forward to. Um, but we can have that discussion next year. Continuance if uh Title III does not get reallocated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up Dave and Dave, um I want to make sure that we've captured after your email, that we captured everything that you had uh reviewed and I apologize, I don't know if we did. So let's, if Commissioners don't mind and if you don't mind, we can just take a close look and I'm specifically referring to the lease payments um that we paid to the state for Francie Wallace and any other state lease that we had. Typically, that was paid for by nonprofits. You can remind me?
Um, well, there's two different leases. So one of the two leases is the United Payette lease.
Okay.
Those are for the two parcels that are on Payette Lake. Um, we pay those to IDL every year. We were supposed to pay those to IDL. And IDL, and I believe twenty-four decided that they would accept the payment straight from United Payette for those two parcels. So these are not part of our snowmobile or our parking lot leases. These are separate leases that we were helping collect the funds for. IDL decided they would take these funds straight from the source. Now they've decided for the twenty-five and twenty-six leases that we just got a prorated twenty-five lease and we have our twenty-six lease. That they want us to collect those funds again, and so we have taken that out of our budget. We need to put that back into our budget so that we can receipt those funds and then make the payment to.
Okay, so what we did is we, maybe, I don't think I have the amount corrected. So for your budget, recreation budget, rent, lease and land, we increased that to thirty thousand. Is that an accurate amount or not?
That would be accurate for the payment to uh United Payette. We have a prorated amount for twenty-five that we're looking at. I asked them to uh prorate that for after our fiscal year starts, since we did not have this in our budget for twenty-five.
Okay.
So we'll have twelve thousand and change that we have to pay for twenty-five portion of the twenty-five lease.
Okay.
And then the twenty-six lease went up just a little bit and it was like twenty-five thousand and change.
So what does that final figure need to be then?
I can get back to you as soon as I get back to my office. I didn't bring that lease document with me.
Did you email it to me?
I believe I did. It was in the email the other day.
I'm sorry to be doing this on the fly though, Commissioners. I just wanna.
So the other thing is we still do not have our lease for the Francie Wallace and the grooming portion either. I think again, this will be like our third year that we haven't had a signed lease. That's supposed to come after the first of the year and I would expect that payment is gonna go up incrementally. I don't know what the amount is yet.
Okay, so I apologize. You said lease line, as discussed, we need to add the back into, we need to cover thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty for the reimbursement portion of the lease that will get uh paid by United Payette. So this needs to go up to thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty?
Uh, plus whatever our amount for the twenty-five lease will be, which is, you know, plus or minus seven thousand dollars. A- again, I just don't have that amount from IDL this year.
And that's for the grooming, for the groomer part of it?
It would be the five to seven thousand dollars for the grooming and the two, three parking lots.
Right.
It did expand that lease this year or last year. That's what we've been trying to negotiate for two years now. It did expand that to include the the Boulder area, the Boulder Reservoir area, Turkey Track and um the parking lot on Lit Creek.
Right.
Where's the toilet.
So based on what I'm hearing, uh we've increased that to forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying. And let me just and everyone, I apologize. I just want to go to the snow grooming budget to see if we in fact accounted for that in that budget. Want to make sure we're not duplicating expenses.
There is a bit in the McCall budget for that.
Okay, so we had budgeted four thousand in McCall, Donley, Snowmobile, four thousand for lease payments?
Yeah, so I would say with the four thousand and the five thousand and in our thirty-two budget, that should cover it.
Where do you, where would you prefer that expense coming out of? The recreation or the the grooming?
It's gonna be split because recreation is gonna pay for a portion of it.
Okay.
And that's the way that it was set up in the past and it does make sense to have a portion that coming out of the Francie Wallace receipts.
Okay, fair enough. So then I want to make sure that I am understanding on the the revenue side, we're collecting all of that is being reimbursed then.
Um, the United.
And how much that is the thirty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, so what I need to do then is make sure that that's being reflected on the revenue side. So again, Commissioners, I apologize for speaking out loud and.
There's a lot of learning going on on my side and Doug and I have found a lot of things we can improve in the budget, so.
Yep.
We're getting there.
This is a new show for you too, so.
It's a new show.
We understand.
Follow-up question on all that. So Director Binghamman, so I I don't have the ability easily to look at the income receipts eh versus the expense receipts. So currently, would you make a statement that our income is covering all of the expenses on these different uh lots that we're doing, covering our grooming expenses? So the recreation department's actually still receiving income.
That's correct.
Even after all of our expenses, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. So the receipt, yeah, the receipts from the three parking lots on IDL land, I can't tell you what the total amount is. I want to say it would probably be about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars. And those help cover other expenses as well.
Francie Wallace, Green Gate, Brush Creek, this year has collected approximately eighteen thousand dollars, Commissioner Mopin.
And so I'm looking.
That's for ma- that's for maintaining them though. I want to make sure that that's clear.
It's any expenses that we have.
Any, any general expenses, that but not related to the lease. Th- these are not, these dollars collected are not paying the lease. I want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Correct. For just maintenance and operation.
Yes. What we would be
I'm looking at the expenses, Doug. It's a lot more than eighteen thousand. That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom line.
Which uh which uh from the recreation budget?
Yes.
Fair with me.
Clear Creek expenses show ninety-one hundred. Boulder Lake, three thousand, Francie Wallace, twenty-five hundred. I mean, there's just some large expenses here. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, are we collecting enough fees in order to offset the expenses of these of these parking lots, of these programs? And Doug, tell me if there's something, is there a report that we can actually see that easily? Or I just have to go to the income report and the expense report?
Yeah, you'll just, I mean, I can run a a report that are combined just for the recreation department so that um might make it a little bit easier to see.
That would be great. I would just like to say, I want to make sure that our overnight fees, our camping fees are in alignment to make sure we're covering our expenses.
Yeah, and as I say, Boulder is probably the exception because we don't collect fees. We ask for donations at Boulder. Um, and that dollar amount reflects two pumpings per year of the vault toilets, plus all the toilet paper that we're putting out there and the maintenance to cover it.
As long as we're, as long as we're even and not going in a hole.
Yeah, and we don't generally pump twice a year up there.
Yep.
That was the expense line that we can't work. That was read on earlier, prior to me.
And you'll, you'll be keeping track of that anyhow. Yeah, if we have to raise fees to take care of operation.
We have fee increases that we'll be bringing to you guys with the Snowmobile ordinance amendments later this year.
Yep.
Hopefully in the next month. But uh those those fees will help cover more of the costs at the at the IDL sites for sure.
So our our rental, our leases are, they're over above, they're just what we have, what we have to do to do business.
Right. Well, and we could potentially look at the amount that we're expending for the snowmobile portion. And we could ask for a little bit better breakdown from IDL as far as our recreation, pure recreation sites versus the snowmobile recreation sites. I think more of the expenses could come out of the snowmobile budget for all.
So Commissioners, I don't see where we accounted for the the um the reimbursement from the Payette Lakes. So I'm gonna make an uh an adjustment to make sure that our revenue line is correct uh created uh specifically for that lease payment that we're gonna get reimbursed in the amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
For this year and next year, yeah. And that will probably go away after twenty-six.
Okay. So Commissioner Mopin, Commissioners, you will, you do not have that revenue line, but we will create a new revenue line to reflect that.
Okay. And the other seven thousand? We're gonna keep that in there?
Yes, those are our snowmobile leases and our parking lot leases.
Okay. Cool. Snow's coming. Uh, I didn't say that.
You better not have seen that.
The other major item I wanted to bring your attention to was our uh um grant line, Doug.
Okay, you think we can reduce that?
I think we should reduce that. I do not see, yeah, I do not see us exceeding, we're coming close to the two that, two million.
Two million, okay. So that does inflate the budget and people are like, why do we, so if we can make that adjustment, if there aren't gonna be grants applied for, uh we do want to put those within reason. And if you.
I I do not see us exceeding a million dollar worth of grants in the next couple of years.
Okay. Um, let me So Commissioner Mopin, I had some concerns. You had indicated the expenses that you had seen were not um matching up. So you you were looking at the Wellington expenses was nine thousand eight hundred and six dollars?
Uh, I would, I need to get back there.
Okay.
I just, there's just not an easy, not an easy way to go back and forth to make sure that we're covering our expenses.
Fair enough, um.
I just wanted the director to make sure that he is reviewing that and making sure that we are covering.
Yeah, agreed. So our expenses for Wellington, according to the expense report, is nine thousand eight hundred and six dollars. Our revenue collected for Wellington is seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. So yes, there is approximately two thousand dollars that has been expended uh that is either being, more than likely is being covered by, let's just say, remaining cash. So that is something that.
And Dave, that's what I'd really like you to focus on if you're coming back to us in the next thirty days. Is are we covering our expenses in these areas, Cabart and Wellington, Clear Creek, Boulder Lake, Francie Wallace, you know, Green Gate?
Yeah, I've 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 been talking to the clerk's office about how we can give a better report for that, cause I I have the same challenges of going back and forth, trying to find the numbers that we're looking at.
Okay, that's perfect. And you've added Lit Creek expenses to this year's budget?
We did.
So, and that is that little campground or?
Uh, parking lot, there's a bathroom there.
Okay.
And we've added that uh Commissioner Mopin into the re- uh revenue side of tw- of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Right, let's just take a deep dive on that just to make sure that, you know, if we have the ability to charge an overnight expense to cover those, let's make sure we're doing that, so.
Dave, I apologize. I completely spaced out. What were you else, were you talking about that we needed to?
Uh, the the lease line, or excuse me, the re- uh grant line.
Okay, grant line, need to reduce that by a million. And then Commissioners, I will also reduce and on the revenue side.
Dave, I also don't see anything for the pickleball area. Do we have any expenses we need to account or income we need to account on the pickleball area?
Uh, it should be co- covered under pickleball. There's a line for pickleball.
Okay, I wasn't seeing it, sorry.
So we have it as Lake Fork recreational site, uh Commissioner Mopin, instead of just pickleball? I think it's always been that site is po- has the potential to be a formal recreation site. So that's how we have titled it?
That works.
And they, I was gonna say, that's probably right now one of our biggest moneymakers as far as parking passes.
Oh, yeah. At least in the summer.
I believe we've covered everything, Dave.
Yeah, Mara kinda sparked one of my thoughts is we did not have technology add-ons in there for either the requested new position for the summer or uh for the planner position. I think we have enough hardware sitting around that we can work with IT and put together another system. We've already purchased a desk out of our budget and so we're ready for a planner to take take a a seat in the office at Lake Fork. We just need a computer.
Fantastic.
I think we're covered.
Okay.
How's that coming?
Uh, we have eleven applicants that I've seen, I believe, and we're gonna close out on the fifteenth. And um there are four, I would say, very strong candidates in that group. Three of them are locals, so.
That's awesome.
Good stuff. Anything else? Did we want to talk about the requested position at all or?
Um, I'll just br- again, bring to the Commissioners' attention that that was in fact budgeted for under um part-time at thirty thousand. And with the uh kind of in the future to see if that needs to become a full-time position based on the revenue that's collected from Horse Thief Reservoir. Um, so that is in the budget right now, budgeted at thirty thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I want to take a breath and and just allow you guys, did the Commissioners have any questions uh that they wanted to go over? I wanna take a breath and and just allow you guys, did the commissioners have any questions uh that they wanted to go over?
I don't know, everything we've been over and it's.
Were there any other department heads or elected officials that wanted to make comments, pres- presentations to the commissioners?
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Commissioners, uh again, I can, I I'd like to thank everyone, we've been working on this since late April. Uh it's not easy, uh it takes a lot of moving parts, you kinda saw some of the. Uh the gears in motion during our conversations with Dave, uh that's continues to go on until the last minute. Uh we want to be able to publish on Monday. Uh for the public to have the opportunity to review for two weeks uh in the local paper, we'll also have it on our website. Uh in order to be prepared for our public hearing on the twenty-seventh.
I'm publishing this Monday?
Uh yep, and then it will be in the paper on. The fourteenth and then on the twenty-first, if I can see that far.
That's correct.
There will be no more changes requested.
This is it, I I am, I am holding a hard line now. That if there are not an elected official or a department head in this workshop. We're going to be closing out uh any changes.
Awesome.
Uh again, and unless there is an emergency or anything comes to our attention. I guess technically they, uh right now is it, well, we have another twenty. Twenty minutes um that it's on the agenda. So we can.
Well, guys, I would just tell you that I talked with the clerk this morning. Some of these reports are new this year and I found them to be a little bit confusing. I've asked that maybe we have some training on these. The clerk is actually gonna clean up some of this and take off some of the um other districts that don't pertain to the county budget. I'm looking at this like making it very clear and transparent to the public when they look at our budget. Uh just making it a little easier to read. So clerk's working on that, if you guys need training at all, please reach out. Doug's very good about doing that.
I don't wanna make excuses, but this is only our second full year with Tyler and understanding the com- uh. The um availability of reports to assist everyone in really understanding. Being transparent, uh so if you look at your revenue report, it's showing tax revenue. Uh for the taxing districts, which at this point in time is, the commissioners don't need to be seeing that, so we will eliminate. When we ran this r- report, we included all of those other taxing districts. Uh so we'll be removing that, it is a little. The reports also show tax revenue collected from previously, previous years. Combined with the other revenue, so it's a little confusing, um I'm hoping that we can just. If the commissioners wanna see previous tax dollars collected, we can show that. And then just revenue uh that we're projecting. Um but on the reports that you have, it shows a combination of the property tax dollars collected. As well as other revenue collected, let's just use a solid waste revenue uh report that you have. It shows where Commissioner Moppen had some questions, it shows that in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. We collected over three million dollars, but what we're projecting in revenue. Uh that's the gate fees, Woody debris fees, recycling fees. So it was a little confusing to her, that says, well, we collected this, but why are we only projecting this? This is a combination of the uh just projected revenue as well as additional fees that we collect. To fund the, the transfer site as well as if the general fund budget, it shows um. Property tax dollars collected as well as the uh just the projected revenue that we're collecting. So if we can potentially eliminate that or break it out, uh we're still working on. Capabilities of of our software.
Make it, make it where a common man can look at it and not be confused.
With the general public, right, I I mean, we, we have an obligation to show the general public clearly of what we're doing. And some of these reports are a little confusing unless you're working in it day to day. Uh like the clerk's office is, so we have a, a, you know, the better understanding of it. I guess to. Wanna go down to our funds, bear with me. How we try to budget for our funds, um it's, it's a little unique. Uh because we have to kinda project what we're gonna have in expenses through October. And then project any revenue that we're gonna have coming in to determine the start. Of the budget for those funds, and I'm just gonna look at. Uh the interlock device fund, this is a fund that we can, that the courts can use to assist with funding. Uh for treatment for individuals that don't have uh the funding to cover their treatment. Also for the interlock device that could be installed in their car. So we collect revenue each year, uh so we need to account for that revenue. And then we need to determine what the starting budget will be, so we've done that with all of the funds that you see. That now these aren't, these funds are um. Outside of the general budget for, for lack of better terms, like the court facilities fund. Each time an individual makes a um a fine payment. There is a portion of it goes to the court facilities fund. This fund can only be used to upgrade or improve on court facilities. The same as our jury fund, the jury fund, we have to take into consideration. So not only does the county have your other, your general funds, your revale funds, we budget. Um we have to also consider all these other funds, so we've done that as well, I didn't know if the commissioner, I guess where I'm getting at, I did not know if the commissioners had any questions. Related to the separate funds that we're showing. We've tried to account for any expenditures coming out of the L A C T F fund. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five to st- uh determine what the starting uh budget will be for twenty twenty-six. I have to take a close look at these to make sure that what we say is in fact what we have in our remaining cash. If we don't, we can't over expend these funds. We're taking a close look at these on a, on a regular basis. And I guess commissioners, if there are no further questions, I would uh. Conclude my budget workshop, final budget workshop for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And with these minor changes that I've made, um permission, I know it's not an action item, it doesn't need to be action item. But just permission to uh publish them in the paper uh to prepare for our public hearing on the twenty-seventh.
Absolutely. Doug, I thank you for all your hard work, this is been over the top as usual.
Uh Commissioner Thompson, as, as you were fully aware, it's not just our office, it's every department within the county, uh including the commissioners, so thank you too.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
And put it in the paper and we'll move on from this year.
Yes, sir.
We're all excited about that.
Uh you know what, I wanted to show, just so the commissioners are aware, that based on the budget that is being presented. Uh with the revenue being collected, the county will have to levy the three percent and new construction. Um and I, sorry, I knew I was wanting to show something additional.
Clark Miller, while you're there, will you tell us how much is gonna have to come out of pill, tobacco bill?
Four hundred thousand is what we're projecting so far, Commissioner Moppen.
Four hundred, okay. And now it's up a hundred thousand from last year?
Uh that is the same as last year, we're increasing the amount of ca- cash forward to fund next year's fiscal budget. Uh so commissioners, the proposed uh levy would be ten million five hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. That would be approximately uh eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents per hundred thousand dollar in value. So for every hundred thousand that you have in value of your home, Valley County would be levying eighty-two dollars and uh. Twenty-five cents, that is a, based on the increased value. It's actually a reduction of about two dollars from last year. But we still nee- are needing to uh levy three percent new construction. And if you wanna see that breakdown, commissioners, um. Bear with me.
Two dollars less, people like that.
Some of the questions you might get on that, anytime our property values go up, usually our levy rate goes down. So people automatically think when their property values go up, their levy is gonna go up, and it does not, it just makes. It shares it across a wider base, if you will.
So commissioners, the county has the ability to uh levy an additional five hundred and ten thousand dollars from last year. That's three percent plus new construction. We've added several new positions, uh that's why in fact we are needing to levy the three percent. And uh uh and new construction, um but we are increasing the amount in. Carryover that we're utilizing uh to assist with the funding of next year's budget. So ten million five hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars is the limit that the county can levy for. And as indicated, based on uh. Next year's budget request, uh the increases that we've had, commissioners, I I can remind you, remind uh everyone. Our tort went up, our health district payment went, went up. Um we had some significant increases for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, um so we. Are recommending at this point in time uh that the commissioners take the full three percent and new construction. This is what I, yeah, the last, in closing, this is it.
Agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, if you'll take us.